Okay. I'd like to call the town of Waukesha Planeboard meeting order. All rise for a punch in the flag. My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. The whole attendance please.
Mr. Baranacu?
Here.
Mr. Saru?
Yep.
Mr. Foldati?
Here.
Mr. Flower?
Yes. Just so everybody knows in the audience that tonight's the first evening that the planning board meeting is being recorded. It will be on some type of a venue, either YouTube or a town website. I just want to make everybody aware of that. In the past, these meetings have not been recorded. Okay. Also, we need a motion to accept the minutes for the February 4th meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. First item on the agenda is adjourned public hearing for the Zamiello two-lot subdivision. We get a motion to open the adjourned public hearing.
I'll make that.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on behalf of the Zamiello subdivision. Okay. At this time, I don't believe there's anybody at all for the Zamiello subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd just put it over to the end of the meeting and nobody shows up by that time, we'll take an action.
Well, we have to adjourn anyway, so we have it for discussion at the end of the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Get a motion to-
As we say in the court, put it on for second call.
Okay. You have a motion to adjourn the Zamiello public.
Just leave it up until the end of the meeting.
Until the end of the meeting? All right. Leave it till the end of the meeting? All right. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Route 376 holdings for a lot line consolidation and special use permit. Okay. Need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Probably should, probably on this side of the room, just so that the camera can pick up the, pick up your plan.
I'm here with Christopher and Jason Companies. We're here to discuss Route 376 Holden, who's our client. So we are proposing a gas station convenience store at the intersection of Route 376 and New Hackensack Heights Road in the town of Waukesha. There's going to be three pump islands along with a convenience store. We were last in front of the board at the end of January where we discussed a couple, two items, including the signage. We've since submitted revised signage to the town. The board has approved this. We have to address remaining comments from the January comment letter. Those will be addressed and resents to the town. We're here tonight for the public hearing.
Okay. So tonight, we're just here to gather public comments and we'll get those addressed at a future meeting. Okay, so at this time, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak regarding this application?
Yeah, I'd like to know if we're going to have a left.
Excuse me, I need you to come up to the podium and state your name and address for the, for the record.
Mr. Pauline.
Yes, right here, right in front of this gentleman.
Right here?
Yeah, right there, yeah.
Why I live on Hackensack Heights Road.
Okay, please, just do me a favor. State your name and address so that the secretary has it.
D H I L I P at A B B A T E. I live at 6 Hackensack Heights Road. I'm on the construction road. One, two, five.
Okay, so is your-
I want to know what their plans are as far as the traffic on Route 376, as to get out of Waukees Street. Because I had my whole front end taken over there because of the traffic and the light and sixty, seventy. And a couple of neighbors up the street also had accidents there. I was wondering if they turn around and put any traffic light there or what.
Okay, well, that's one of the items that their, the project is actually still working on addressing, but you want to, Chris, you just want, I'll, we will allow it to let the engineer answer the question real quick.
So right now, there's a proposal to put a left turn lane in from Route 376 onto the town road, and then there would be a through lane on the opposite side of that. There's no traffic signal proposed at this intersection.
That's going to be a nightmare.
There'll be a left turn lane proposed.
A left turn lane proposed. In other words, you can't go right and you only come to go left coming out of my street.
Oh, so this is your street. You could still take a right or a left, but there will be a left turn lane to come into your street, a separate left turn lane dedicated to come into the street.
How about from the right side?
You could still take right turns in from Route 376 and that.
And there's going to be a light where? There is no signal.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other, any other question or any other comments? Up to podium, state your name and address for the record.
Marlin Chung to Hackensack Heights Road. I'm the very first house on that street. Okay, I wanted to find out about our driveways right there coming in, and it's already dangerous right there already getting in and out. The traffic is going to be there. I want to know what's going to happen there with our driveway. And again, as what Mr. Abbott said, it's very hard getting out of that street. You definitely need a stop or a traffic light right there.
Okay, all right. We'll know your comment and we'll have it addressed at a future, future submission to us. All right, thank you.
My name is Cindy Farmer. I'm at 7 Hackensack Heights Road. My property borders the second lot from the gas station to the top of the hill. Where would the septic system and leach fields be presented to put in?
On the, the engineer will show you on the plan. It would be on the upper.
So where's that in relation to the top of the hill?
The top of the hill is here.
Right.
And this drops down significantly.
So that's Route 376?
This is, here's Route 376 here. Here's the top of the hill here. This drops in elevation down to here.
Mm-hmm. And then the fields would be?
Been here.
Right now.
Running parallel to that property line.
Okay. Okay. That was interesting. Thank you.
I'm Barbara Mercatante, and I reside at four Hackensack Heights Road. And my question is, my front door used to hit the woods. Now there's a dirt driveway facing my front door. Is this going to be an egress from the service station onto Hackensack Heights Road?
I can tell you what's your, some of the existing work that you've seen in there is the remediation of all the contaminated sewn levels in the ground. They're approximately ninety-five percent complete there. The actual means of egress and ingress into the site is situated, so it's almost right between the two properties. The property boundaries across the road are right here. They almost bifurcate the access driveway here, so.
Is that where I am?
So it's here. It's kind of, right here are the property lines. So there's a house here and there's a house over here. This is kind of central centered right on your property line, your property line right here. So if you're, you said you're the second house?
I'm the second.
So I don't know how far into the house is the property line, but a car is coming up and I can't lie around in front of your house.
Can I ask another question?
They come up to the podium.
Marlin Chung to Hackensack. Now, the gas station is directly across my house. Whenever it rains or anything, all that water comes down, comes right cross over to my home. Is there anything you guys have done?
Yeah, so what we've done here is we've kind of rerouted how the drainage is coming. Right now, we're letting the drainage come to the west toward Route 376, and it's going to be captured, and it's going to be run through a sand filter. All the runoff that's caught on this side, all the runoff which currently flows across the roadway over here, it's going to be captured and routed in what's called the bioretention area. Those two solar manager pipelines will converge into this detention facility. There's an existing catch basin at the intersection of Hackensack Heights Road and Route 376 will be tying that drainage right into that. We are not, there's the remainder of the deck, there's about a fifty-foot buffer which we're not touching, so however that drainage goes, which I believe flows out of the Hackensack Heights Road, it's going to be blocked.
The gas station and the whole property is like this, so everything really comes over our side.
Correct. What we're doing though is we're capturing it and directing it straight to this catch basin, which currently, if I'm understanding it correctly, is overflowing across the highway.
Yes.
So at this time, I guess, probably adjourn the public hearing then for, for future date. Some in, professionals have any comments at this point?
We have, I think, one item, the lighting item from our last memo, but that's about it.
That's about it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're fairly complete. We wanted, all we wanted to see was the access points and.
Okay.
At your request, at the end of the January meeting, we submitted the traffic study that was prepared by Mazur as well as the town.
Yes, we received that. Okay.
My office would have no objection if you did want to close the hearing.
I'll leave it to the board, I guess, at this point. I mean, if everybody, if we have enough sufficient information, we go ahead and close the public hearing at this point in time then. You guys have no objections to that?
No objection to that, no.
No objection. I'll make that motion.
All right, same. All right, so motion made, seconded and made to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay.
So we'll modify our plans based upon our January comments.
Okay, so made a resubmission to a future meeting.
And we'll also, Mazur is about a month, we can halve out, so we'll be able to incorporate all their off-site improvements onto this plan for the board's review as well.
That's good. That's good.
That'd be good, thank you.
Chris, did you just drop something?
Yeah, my pen. I would have had that deducted from my pen if I could. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Maloney Heights subdivision.
Okay. Just put your name for the record.
Brian Stokosa from Dairy Engineering. This subdivision goes back a couple of years. We did the subdivision, I believe it got filed back in 2007. It's an eight-lot subdivision off of Maloney Road. And at that time, the map was filed, easements were filed, the drainage was approved, and at that time, we never filed the NOI, which is the construction activity premises. Substantial time has gone by since then. The applicant would like to begin installing the road. In order to comply with current regulations, drainage had to be revised and updated to meet current standards. We've gone ahead and done that. Town engineer has approved that. And in part of doing that improvement, there were some increases in easements that we had to do to incorporate the expanded drainage. We've gone ahead and shown that on the plan. That'll be part of a map planning report that will be in front of the town board. And the other component is, we had a bond that's been in place for a number of years that deals with the road construction drainage improvements associated with the subdivision. That number goes back to 2007. We're now, we've now updated that bond amount to reflect the drainage improvements and also increase in pricing associated with catch basins, grading, piping, that kind of thing. In addition to that, the inspection fee has also gone up slightly. So we've notified the applicant that he will be responsible to come up with a difference of each, and we'll be preparing a new bond to the town board, and we'll satisfy whatever inspection fees are required. That's it?
All right. Okay, so as formally at this point, we need to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. So motion's made?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, so at this time, we'll allow the public, if there's anybody in the public that wishes to make any comments regarding Maloney Heights subdivision, please come up to the podium, state name and address. Seeing that there's no one here for a Maloney Heights subdivision, at this point, make a, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, motion's made?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. All right. Is there?
There's a resolution.
If you have any, there's no additional items, correct?
Actually, on page four, there's a dollar amount to be inserted for the amount of the maintenance guarantee. So on page four, item four, we insert the number one hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars as the amount of the maintenance guarantee. And then in paragraph, small i, just above that, we'll find out the correct sheets, the correct drawings to insert there and put that, put that in there. We'll correct that.
Okay. So do we have the, the final set of sheets for that currently, or?
We'll get that from Bob.
Okay. All right. Obviously, you've reviewed the, the resolution as it's been proposed.
We're with it.
You're okay with that?
Yeah. We talked about, shall I approve destruction plans?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll fill that in. So you're, you're free to go ahead and approve this as amended.
Okay, so the two amendments?
Yes.
All right, so at this point, we need to approve the resolution for amended final subdivision plot approval.
Make that motion.
Okay, so we have motions been made. Is second?
Second.
All right. Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is discussion regarding the Fernias subdivision.
Hi, Mr. Turner.
Okay, we've, I guess at this point in time, everything's been completed in terms of the requirements for the subdivision.
Yes.
There's the, okay, go ahead, David.
So at this point in time, you can authorize me to draft a resolution of final subdivision plot approval for the next meeting. And you may want to waive the public hearing on the final plot because the final plot is in substantial conformance with the preliminary plot. So you normally waive the, the final public hearing on, in that case.
Yeah, okay. All right. All the outstanding items have been, have been addressed?
Sufficiently so, yes.
And one of the conditions was a creation of a drainage district for the property which the town board did at its February.
Fourteenth?
Eleventh meeting. So that the district has been created.
Okay. All right. Okay, so at this point, I guess we have to decide whether we're going to waive the public hearing for final approval. Do I want to make a motion to waive?
Motion there?
Huh?
Motion there?
You're going to make a motion to waive it? Motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? The motion carries. All right. So being that we don't have to, we don't have to have a public hearing for this, at this point, we authorize the planner to write a final resolution to be voted on at a future meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
For the next, for the next party vote?
Eighteenth?
For the next party vote?
Do you have a next meeting?
Yes.
By the eighteenth, okay.
All right. So we get a motion to authorize the planner to write the resolution?
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. So we'll see you at the.
March eighteenth?
March eighteenth meeting. All right. Okay. Next item on the agenda is discussion regarding NERP Holdings for Tractor Supply Company and Retail Store.
My name is Jim Cassidy with the engineering firm, Halcy Pearson and Cassidy. Here tonight representing NERP Holdings and Acquisition, who are the prospective purchaser of a piece of property known as Tax ID Parcel sixty-one forty-seven or fifty-seven dash oh four, fifty-three ninety-three seventy-four. It's a property is located on New York Route nine. Matt Darling of NERP Holding and Acquisition is here with me this evening. Also this evening, I have with me George Logan from Rema Ecological Services. He's our environmental professional. We were before you at the end of January, gave you a brief presentation at that point for the proposed development for this piece of property located on New York Route nine. If I can just overview a little bit about what we're proposing here. The first map that you have up before you is an existing site photo. The site is outlined in yellow, consisting of five point nine acres of highway business sold land. It's located on the west side of New York Route nine. The gray area on the right-hand side of the page is New York Route nine. To the north is the Watcher Falls Accurate Dealership. To the northwest, in west, is a vacant piece of property. And then to the south is Fowler House Road, where we bought seven existing residents. As you can see, the existing site is primarily wooded, consisting of deciduous conifers. We have about three hundred and ninety feet of frontage along US Route nine. Access to the site is actually shared through a common driveway with the Accurate Dealership. If anyone's been to the Accurate Dealership, there's a entrance on the north end of the site and an exit lane on the soulier side of the site. There is a small wetlands area located toward the rear of the property, which we're not going to be anywhere near with our proposed activity. In addition to, there's another wetlands that's actually offsite that will be nowhere near with our proposed activity. Topography of the site is, I'd say, moderate for the front third or two-thirds of the property, with elevations ranging from about two thirty-four along the runway, sloping down to a grade of about two twenty-six towards the middle, and then it gets steeper in the rear portion of the site, where it drops off to about elevation one eighty-three. So we're proposing to develop this site with a new retail building. They'll be home for Tractor Supply Company, as I mentioned last, in January. If you don't know, Tractor Supply Company is a retail operation that likes to be in a rural community. Tractor Supply is a retailer that you can go in and buy, we'll say, products that a small gentleman farmer would be looking to purchase. You can buy clothing, work clothing such as car hire. You can buy pet food. You can buy implements for tractors, or you can buy hardware. You cannot buy tractors, but you can buy riding lawnmowers, log splitterers, those type, and smaller items, not large-scale tractors. So on the plane you see before you, the brown or tan colored rectangle is the footprint of the building. It's just the one nineteen thousand ninety-seven square feet. This is the prototypical building. To the front of it, the gray area is the parking lot that would service the building. As mentioned last time, we're proposing to actually have a reduction of the number of parking spaces. According to the regulations, we're required to have a hundred, one space for every hundred and fifty square feet. So that would require a total of one hundred and twenty-eight spaces. We're actually, at this point, proposing a total of seventy-seven spaces. So per the commission's recommendation, we went to the zoning board in the process of seeking a waiver of variance for reduction of the parking spaces. In addition to, we're looking for a variance from the regulation that requires if we land banked spaces, like we talked about last time, we would enhance the landscape of that area. So that's in the process and hopefully approved at their, their next meeting. In addition to the parking area, there's a light gray area along the front of the building. That's an area we call a permanent sidewalk display. That's an area we display seasonal items such as log splitters, lawnmowers, fertilizer spreaders, and those type of items. To the back, you see a larger light gray area. That's a fenced-in outdoor display area. This is a fifteen thousand square foot concrete pad, circumference with an eight-foot-high chain link fence with a gate on either side of it. This is an area that they put larger products that cannot fit into the store, such as if you wanted to buy corrals for horses or fencing for horses. A piece of fencing is about twenty feet long, about four feet high, and they have rigid steel, so it's not something to really carry into a store. In addition to, as I mentioned, the implements for tractors can weigh up to a thousand pounds, so such as brushhogs, york rakes, box spreaders would be also stored out inside on that pad. So the larger products, if anyone wanted to make a purchase for those larger products, they'd actually have to park in the front parking lot, go into the store. Sales clerk would allow them to make the purchase through the, through the register. They would then go back out to their vehicle. They would pull around to the rear store. The clerk would open the gate at the side yard area. They'd be able to pull to the side yard. Product be loaded into their vehicle or onto a trailer, and then the gate on the opposite side would be reopened so they could continue on their way after, after they're loaded. But that whole fenced area is typically locked down unless a clerk opens it for a customer. In addition to that, at our last meeting, we're proposing to have a, what we call a permanent trailer display area. Tractor Supply sells landscape trailers, the black short landscape trailers. On the initial plan that we presented to you, we're proposing those landscape trailers to be among the frontage of the parking lot. Per the commission's recommendation, what we've done is we've taken that area and we've switched it all the way to the west side, so it's at the far back side of parking lot as Matt's pointing out. So we've had a spot of about three thousand square feet, accounted about fifteen trailers for sale. So it's to the rear store. So it's to the rear store. We are looking to have three small pads along the front of the parking lot for a display of three individual trailers, just to have some product out there near the front of the site for customers to see, because everything else is going to be to the rear of the site. Zoning, on the plans that were submitted, we presented a zoning bulk table. We find we easily meet and exceed all the requirements, other than the parking requirement, as previously mentioned, or in the process of seeking a reduction in the number of parking spaces. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the reason we're comfortable with the reduction of parking spaces is we, personally, I've done about 12 Tractor Supplies. We typically range in the number of parking spaces from about 60 to 75. Tractor Supply is not a high-volume retail use, such as a pharmacy or a grocery store. So we feel that the 77 parking spaces that we are proposing are more than adequate. And in the worst case, if Tractor Supply were to move out or to vacate the building, what could happen is that concrete pad, the 15,000 concrete pad to the rear of the site, can be converted to 45 additional parking spaces. Therefore, the parking requirement would be met for the proposed use of the retail building. Therefore, that's why we're also seeking a variance of land banking parking spaces. So it's not actually, we're not seeking variance of land banking, but one of the requirements of land banking parking spaces is that if we're not going to use it, it needs to be landscaped. And as being a concrete pad, it would not be landscaped. So we provide for variance for that section also. The building will be serviced by public water and public sewer because of the elevation. The sewers would be pumped back up to the roadway. What you'll see is that the roadway elevation at our driveway is about elevation 234. Our building sits at about elevation 226, so it's actually about eight feet down below the road. We did reconfigure the parking lot, I mentioned slightly. If you look at that front driveway, initially, we had individual curb cuts off that driveway to service each drive row along the front of the parking lot. To allow us to lower the grade inside a little bit more, we isolated that driveway. You don't have those individual connections to the main driveway on the north. This allowed us to increase the slope of the driveway from 4% to about 6%, so it's a little bit steeper, but allows us to drop the grade of the building and work with the topography a little bit better. Property will also be serviced by all other public utilities, such as electric, telephone, and cable. All those services will also be brought in underground. Can you go to the next one? Let's see what you've got there. Because of the topography, everything from this site is sloping from Route 9 to the rear of the site. So as part of the development, we've designed a stormwater management plan. What you'll find is there's a series of catch basins within the parking lot. Those catch basins will collect the runoff from the parking area and the front lawn area. They will all collect it, bring it around the rear of the building, whereas another series of catch basins. Can you go back to one page, Matt? No, back to the, for, for the truck. Back to that truck, yep. So it's going to, the whole parking lot will be collected by a series of catch basins and then conveyed through underground pipes. It'll be carried down along the, I'll say, the northwesterly property line to that blue area. That's where we have a stormwater management basin that is designed to not only attenuate the flow post-development. Is it okay if I can move over to your board? Can you hear me from there?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
Well, actually, well, you probably need to stay by the podium because of the microphone at the podium, being that the meeting's being recorded.
Sure.
The microphone's on the table.
Very fine.
So you can unmute it. All right.
It's going to be a little easier to do this. So all the stormwater is collected within a series of catch basins in the parking lot. It's conveyed through a series of pipes to another set of catch basins at the rear. From there, it's going to be conveyed down on a access drive to the stormwater management basin. Again, the stormwater management basin is designed not only to attenuate the flow post-development, but also is designed to treat stormwater quality. Basically, what happens is the bottom section of the basin is designed in a manner to allow the water to infiltrate back into the ground, like a blowover. So this is a blow-up in the stormwater management basin. So the water's coming through a series of pipes and then down. First, it comes into what we call a four bay. The four bay is designed to take the first flush of runoff and then capture the larger particles that may be in the stormwater runoff. From there, there's a filtration berm. It discharges through the filtration berm and goes on to the next of them. So what happens is the bottom of the basin is actually lower than the outlet structure, so the water can accumulate in there and is allowed to infiltrate back to the ground. From there, there's an outlet structure. This is a concrete box with a two-elevation rectangular weir on it, so two openings. So as the water builds up in the basin, it's attenuated, it's controlled, and then it's allowed to go through an outlet pipe. For the outlet itself, we're proposing a level spreader. This is the one we've used for several different Tractor Supplies. I particularly like it, this is a section through the bottom of the basin, just to give you an example of what's going on. So the bottom portion, the lighter green portion, is the area of stormwater, the line of stormwater treatment that we need to have for improved stormwater quality. The upper portion is the water that's stored for attenuating and controlling flood. So the outlet goes through the outlet structure, through a pipe, and then to the level spreader. And simply, what we like to do with the level spreader is if I take a section through it, if anyone's seen a concrete galley that's utilized for a septic system, what we do is we take a four-foot concrete galley, we excavate out a trench, we bury the bottom portion of the galley two feet into the ground. This would be the uphill side or the detention side of the outlet structure. This is the downhill side. So we bury the uphill side, and then we keep the bottom side, the upper portion, two feet exposed. So what happens is the stormwater comes into the, into the level spreader. The bottom two feet is allowed to infiltrate back into the ground, promoting groundwater recharge. If we have a storm that produces over that amount, there's wee holes inside of the galley units. The water's allowed to discharge through the wee holes, through a riprap pad, and then continue overland as it would do today. So it reintroduces level flow into the naturally drainage area where it would go today. But we've had a lot of luck using this compared to other discharge structures in that it doesn't plug up with like a normal one where if you had a tree down or something, you would have a blockage when a tree falls in it. It promotes groundwater recharge a lot better than your typical structure. We've also taken a look at several different drainage areas. This is a copy of your GIS mapping. We broke it down into a couple sub-areas, this being Route 9, this being the Accurate Dealership, our site being in this area. This is that wetlands area I mentioned that's off-site. So right now, what happens is within our sub-area, everything's flowing in this west direction. Once it gets to a low point here, there's a slight depression in the land, like a channel, and it's flowing in a northerly direction, eventually getting into a drainage system and a subdivision that's off to the north here. Same thing, we took a look at this sub-area, it's also contributing to that drainage system that's off to the north. That's picking up the Accurate Dealership and the commercial development that's off to the north of us also. We then superimposed our proposed development on it, built the model, we ran it through the stormwater management basin, did a post-development model, and we find with the control of the stormwater basin, then discharging these sub-areas, that post-development to that drainage system, we can be at the same flow with the development of this site. In the package, we've also submitted a landscaping plan, some important things to note, that what we're trying to do is realize there's a residential zone here. For the zoning regulations, what it says, or the way I interpret it, is that you typically have a 10-foot side yard. When you butt against the residential zone, you're supposed to use the more restrictive setbacks. So in this particular case, it actually works to be a 25-foot buffer in this area. There is some grading and some clearing trees that needs to occur. So what we try to do is concentrate the majority of our landscaping along this southerly property line. So within this area, we are going to be proposing a dense row of evergreens in addition to some canopy trees along the top of the retaining wall that we need to build. Within this area alone, we're looking at putting almost 48 trees in. In addition to, within the islands of the parking lot, we're adding an additional canopy trees and then some lower shrubs within each one of those islands. So we're trying to concentrate the majority of our landscaping in this area. Can I have the next one? At the last meeting, we also presented to you our proposed elevations for the building. This is a similar elevation to what you've seen before. Again, the structure is a one-story concrete block building. The front portion is a split-faced concrete block. It's painted with what's called a sand layer color, so it's almost like a taupe color on the bottom four feet of the building. And then on the upper portion, it's painted what they call urban putty, so it's a tannish color on the upper portion. The front vestibule sticks out from the face of the building. There's two columns on either side that are made out of galvanized steel, so almost like a galvanized pipe, with a gable that comes over the front entrance. It's also made out of a galvanized steel material. And then there's awnings that run across the entire face of the building that come out about five feet that are also made out of that galvanized material. They use the galvanized material to kind of keep in the farming theme. A lot of farm operations use the galvanized metal line. There'll also be a signature band of safety red around the top edge and then on the sides along the perimeter, along with just over the door. The thing that's different on this plan from what you saw last time is if we go back to the site plan, the loading area is proposed on the north side of the building. On this pad, there's going to be a mobile loading ramp, and we have a dumpster pad. The question came up about being able to screen that area. So what you'll find on the updated elevation is we took the front wall, front side of the building, and extended it an additional 30 feet, so that front wall will block that loading area, so you won't be able to see that loading area from the front road. In addition to, as I mentioned, the building is going to be about eight feet down below the road, so there's questions about the screening of rooftop units. There is five rooftop units on top of the building. So being down below the road is a little difficult to hide them. So what we're proposing is to put a, it's a screen structure around it that would be similar in color to the site itself. It's called a streetscape screening unit, and we propose those around each one of those rooftop units that's on top of the building. So the other thing we've submitted as part of our application is we did a traffic impact analysis, it was prepared by Soli Engineering, who's a joint engineer on this project. They prepared the traffic analysis, and as I mentioned before, with Tractor Supply, you'll find that they're a low traffic generator, low customer count compared to a grocery store or a pharmacy. So we prepared a traffic study as part of the application, and it was determined by looking at the Institute of Traffic Engineers ITE Manual, fifth generation, tenth edition, that we find that the peak generation for a Tractor Supply, based upon the PM peak hours, would be 27 trips. That'd be 13 trips in, and that'd be 14 trips out for a total of 27 trips. During the Saturday peak, the total, the peak hour would be 61 trips, so that's 30 and 31 out. We then had them build a model, a synchronous analysis model, where they take existing traffic loads on the existing roadway network. What they do with that is once they have those traffic loads, they actually increase it by about two and a half percent for our growth factor, so when the building is actually built and operational in hopefully 2020, it's more realistic to the model. So one of the things we found along Route 9 is that presently, your total daily traffic on Route 9 is about 35,000 trips and movements a day. When we build the model and we add the additional traffic generation from the Tractor Supply, what we look at is the level of service that the roadway network is operating at all these surrounding intersections. What we found with this development is that because of the low traffic generation, it does not change any of the level of services for any of the intersections within this general area. So, the last thing I'd like to talk about is the, the one, I guess, critical that's having with the development is property, is that as we go on through the review process, we found that this whole corridor is within an area of threatened or endangered species, in particular, along the Hudson River corridor, there's possible habitat for the Indianabat. The Indianabat, the issue we have is that there's a restriction in the time that you can cut trees down. The restriction is from the beginning of April to, I believe, the beginning of October. So as part of our application, what we're asking for is to go in and basically be able to feld the trees. So we would like to be able to go in, in the area we're developing, actually drop the trees at this point, not going to start to land, not going to remove them. But we're looking to feld about 3.9 acres of trees. What this plan is showing is the area that would have to be cleared, and the trees would be laid. But then as part of it, we're also proposing, and working out with your town engineer, is that in worst case, if for some reason the project did not go forward, we'd be looking at posting a restoration bond. The restoration bond would allow for the town or the applicant to go in and restore the site by going in and tripping the trees that are down. In addition to, along the frontage and along the southerly boundary line, planting a series of evergreens to make a dense evergreen hedgerow, looking at planting white pines at an interval of about 20 feet for a total of about 30 trees. So we'd be posting that money upfront before the trees are felled. So with that, I'm going to have George Logan come up. He's our environmental professional. He can explain a little bit more about the Indianabats and what he's found on this site for half, half quarter.
Good evening. For the record, my name is George Logan with Remake Ecological Services. I have a master's degree in natural resources science. My concentration is wildlife management and conservation biology. Very quickly, as you probably know already, Indianabats migrate to their spring and maternity roost, according to the literature, at least in this area, somewhere around April 15 through the early part of May. So the restriction of March 31st is a conservative factor that was put in by the state and also by the feds, because this is a fairly endangered species. And then, of course, the pup season for the Indianabats and sometime around the end of July, beginning of August, but again, it's a conservative factor that this place did. As far as use, what Indianabats use, they don't have a specific restriction to a particular tree. They don't have a restriction to the size of a tree, but usually what they go for, I would say probably 90% or more, is exfoliating bark of dying or dead trees. When I was here in November, I did my ecological study and looked at also the wetland areas, with the exception of one dying tree, which is approximately here, very close to an old residence, I did not see any other trees that fit that. But again, there might be some since I was there, so therefore the restriction. Once this is done, there's close to two acres of trees that are left, and from my survey, what I did see is that a lot of the larger trees are in this area down here. There's a few on the slope here which would be felled, but a larger concentration is down here. There's one large swampy oak that's next to the small wetland area that we delineated, and there's also several larger swampy oaks that are along the western property boundary where there's an old wall. And some of those are starting to decay, so there's probably some potential habitat there. Again, once the spelling is done, there's still going to be sufficient habitat, probably not now, but in the future, for roosting habitat for the Indianabat. They like to roost not singly, but in large numbers, so 12, 15 or so, sometimes more than that. There's ecological reasons for that. So they have to find a large enough tree or several trees and enough exfoliating bark for them to kind of congregate together under that. So I guess my conclusion is that once the trees are felled, there's still habitat that's left. There's conservative factors that wouldn't be an issue as far as disturbing the potential habitat that's there. And, you know, looking at the restoration, I think the restoration is sufficient to provide habitat, of course, not for Indianabats, but for other species that would use that kind of habitat, which will be there in the future, which if nothing happened here, basically would happen to have a structure of a type of environment, a mosaic of metal that's going to revegetate, and of course... And of course, since the soil is not disturbed, there'll be a lot of re-sprouting of the trees that are already there, which is a lot of oaks and mowers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just ask you a quick question here regarding the bats. I mean, if for some reason you had to wait till after April to cut down the trees, is there a process that you would, by doing a survey of the property, be able to go that route instead of, you know, instead of us giving approval right now?
So there's two ways. So what that does, it elevates it to the next level with the state. There's two ways of doing it. First, I would have to put together a definitive, so basically do a very, very concentrated search for potential roosting habitat, maternity roosts for the species, present that information to the state. They might or might not go for that. And then the fallback is to do an acoustic study, which basically means that from mid-April to mid-May, we're waiting to see if bats arrive on the site. So nothing would happen until later on, probably end of May or June, at which point it's problematic.
Right. So what you're saying right now is that there's really no, there's really no habitat there other than one tree, for the most part?
The only tree that I saw that was dying that had some potential is that one. And by the way, it's completely covered by wisteria, so it's not ideal habitat to start with.
Right.
And it's also very close to existing disturbances in the north, which is a factor.
Okay. All right, I think you answered the question. Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this point in time, we haven't reviewed the plan, I mean, what's been submitted. I mean, today, I mean, we need to make a, my understanding is that we need to make a determination regarding State Environmental Call a Review Act and make a negative declaration before we could allow any trees to be cut on the property. At this time, I don't believe that the planner and the engineer have actually reviewed the submittal to the point to provide us with enough information to make this decision So at this point, unless any of the other board members wants to interject anything, but I think at this point, we're going to need to probably hold off on the tree cutting request for this evening.
Good evening. My name is Al Flatman, attorney at Cuddy and Fader. We're new to the project, so we're still getting caught up to speed. But for this tree clearing issue, I just wanted to point out that with the restoration bond, the benefit, or the harm, the potential harm to the town is almost nothing. You'll be in the same position as you were before if we are allowed to felled the trees, but kind of the detriment to us, the applicant, if we do have to wait and aren't able to cut down the trees in time is far greater than it delays the project pretty significantly and adds, you know, a good amount of expense to it as well. So I understand the board's concern about, you know, having time to adequately review the plans, but we are proposing to post a bond and restore the site if the project doesn't go forward. So there's not, the way we see it, too much detriment to the town if we are allowed to proceed on this course that we're proposing.
Want to go first, not go second? I'll make it first.
Why don't you go first?
So with respect to, you know, the issues, one, seekers, so we've looked at a couple of options with respect to this. One is, we don't believe that the project meets any of the thresholds for type one, so it would be an unlisted project. There are a number of other agencies that require, approvals would be required, one being the Z B A, State D O T. I don't believe, I don't know, have you looked at the issue? Are there any permits required from D E C?
Indiana bats the only issue?
Right. And then health department. So, I mean, as far as, you know, I mean, with respect to, in our review, typically D E C would not require, would not allow any cutting of a tree prior to the issuance of a negative declaration. So I think that, you know, from that point of view, until the board has an opportunity to issue a neg dac, it's my advice that it would not be appropriate to authorize any tree cutting. Having said that, based on what your expert has said, there is, you know, it's, we're talking about less than four acres of disturbance. You're talking about other habitat on the site. The area where, you know, that one tree is next to a car dealership on a highway that has thirty thousand trips a day, doesn't really seem like prime habitat. So I think that, you know, I think what my suggestion would be is to consult, at least between now and the next meeting with D E C, to see if we can get some preliminary guidance as to what the possibility is. But at this point in time, you know, I don't think we're in a position to, at this meeting, issue the approvals. However, and again, you know, should D E C say that it's not a, it's not a concern, potentially, you know, you wouldn't have to post a restoration bond at all. It's not, you know, you can, you can cut the trees in time, so. I mean, I think you understand, you know, what has to happen with D E C. I don't, I don't think the fact that, again, cutting the trees before April first is the easiest solution, but where we are in the process, I don't necessarily believe we can issue a neg dac prior to that. So if you want to contact me after the meeting, we can have some further discussions.
If I may, we didn't have a communication with D E C.
I'm not sure you're being heard by.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, George Logan, for the record, Reim Ecological. We did get a letter from the D E C and basically said that from their perspective, especially for weapons, et cetera, they didn't see any issue. There was one little section of the Indiana bat, and unfortunately, I left, left the letter in my scanner because I scanned it to our engineer earlier today. So we can put that into the letter, but my recollection from looking at that particular section was that this board or the town board could approve felling of the trees prior to April first.
Right.
As long as the other things that we talked about lined up. So I can, I can provide that letter.
I mean, if you could provide that, you know, we'll, we'll review it and we'll can put this over for the next meeting.
And we could, right, we could review it. I believe they're back in front of us again on the eighteenth?
In two weeks.
In two weeks. Yeah. You could submit the information, and we can, you know, submit it to the secretary. She'll distribute it to everyone, and then we can review it, you know, during that period of time.
I have it in my phone, but that's, I can submit my phone. Thank you.
Well, just for the record, if they come back on the eighteenth, then should we decide to accept the bond? That still has to go to the town board on the twenty-fifth?
Right.
For acceptance.
Yeah. So it kind of narrows things down to a very short window of time if we do go that approach, just so you're aware.
We can address, well, we can have a discussion regarding that.
Have you received any correspondence from New York State D O T?
Not yet. No, we've submitted the application, but we haven't made correspondence back.
All right, so we're awaiting that, too.
Okay. Any other members here have any questions regarding what was presented this evening?
Around that stormwater basin that you talked about earlier, is the chain, is there going to be a protective chain link fence that you talked about earlier around that also from both people on the inside and on the outside, especially children?
That was a proposed one, but we can consider it.
Are you going to be using local contractors to do that clearing?
Most likely. I do have a G C I Connecticut.
That's not local.
He'll be, he'll be bidding the job, and then there'll be other ones that will bid as well. I just wanted to make you aware that there may be some that come up from out of state.
I mean, it'd be nice being that these guys are going to be shopping at your store if they're local.
Yeah. Well, it's, you know, it's all based on economics. I can guess somebody who is economical, and they'll be the ones to get the job.
Okay. All right. Okay, so I guess at this point, I mean, it's my, or getting us the rest of the information, and then we can take it up again at the next meeting. Unless you guys have any other, any other questions?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing at this time? Okay.
We'll get the letter from D E C.
Right, yeah. Forward it to the secretary, and she'll distribute to everybody, and then we can, you know, it'll be reviewed prior to the next meeting.
Is there, what's this topic? We can. There's one Monday, and there's one, it's the second and fourth Monday, so I think it's the eleventh and twenty-fifth.
I don't think there's any other month that would deposit the bond, but is there, if there's no way to?
So if this board should agree to accept a bond, the town board has to, has to approve it and accept it, more accept it.
Say that again.
He wants to know what the town board's involvement is with the bond. They said the town board is the board that has to accept the bond.
Right.
There's no way to have a preliminary acceptance based on a potential approval or denial from the board from the planning and funding commission? Maybe we can have a next meeting for the town board?
No, I mean, so, I mean, one of the, I mean, no, but we can, we can discuss, you know, some options, I don't, I mean, with respect to that, so. If I can just, okay, thanks. And then, can I, his court, because I'll call, I'll call down to Cuddy and Fader, and we'll talk. Okay?
Okay.
Next question. Was your question related to the tree cutting or the whole project in general?
Well, I'd like to see local contractors in the whole project general, but the tree cutting, there are some local companies that can handle that project that you have.
Would you like my card as well to give you some justice?
Sure. All right. Just no further questions. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Red Cedar Arborists and Landscapers contract deal.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Very thorough presentation. Thank you. We've got to get a town tripod. We're going to get a town tripod, so we're going to have to bring yours.
I have three in my office.
Yeah, no, I need something a little more substantial, yeah.
We also need, well, we're going to get like whiteboards and stuff, so. All right, kind of screens. Put it up.
Yeah, we'll see. It's a tax cap.
That's, um, PEG grant money.
I am Michelle Zerfus with Burger Engineering, with me Steve Relyea of Red Cedar. And you, I know you've seen the project before, so we're here for the lead agency. We'd also like, if possible, to be scheduled for a public hearing and circulation.
Okay, well, I guess we did circulate for lead agency, and it sounds like nobody has objected to it. So I mean, yes, so tonight we can declare ourselves as the lead agency for the project for the review. In terms of, I have one question for you regarding a letter from SHPO. It was regarding, I guess it was in the environmental assessment form, there was a request there for the archaeological review of the property. Has that been completed at this time?
That hasn't been done yet. It's because it's in the archaeologically sensitive area, so they'll want to, I guess, the part one, maybe a part two, but that's initially the, the archaeologist just does a research thing, find out if there's any historic stuff in the area. And then if they think there might be something, they go out and do some test holes. So that has not been done yet. Very unlikely that there will be anything found, given the history of the site, so we can move forward on that at the same time.
So what, what's the status of that right now? Did you have somebody look at that issue?
Not yet. I'm just looking at the way the ground's been. The farmer's been using that for years, and it's been turned over so many.
And that's typically, you know, if it's been farmed for a very long period of time, and you contact SHPO with that information, they'll issue a letter based on that regarding, you know, nothing of significance. So, you know, if, and that's pretty common with respect to, you know, things that have been used as a farm for a long period of time, because just the act of farming would basically disturb the ground and any artifacts that were there. So even, I don't know, and, you know, as you know, on the E A F mapper, God knows where the, where the site really is. So I think if you, if you reach out to SHPO, and you can, based on the fact that it was formed, if you can give them a brief narrative of the history of the property of what it was used for, you know, I think they can pretty much give you a, a letter saying it's, it's not of significance. I don't necessarily believe you'd have to go through a whole, you know, phase one A or anything like that. I think if you, but I think that would be the step to do with respect to that. So, you know, and almost all of the property, even the property that's being rezoned has been, has a history of being farmed. I mean, nothing, nothing strikes, I mean, it's pretty much open, I mean, for the most part, right? There's not really anything there.
Right.
So I think if you, if you reached out to SHPO and just had a conversation with, with respect to that, I think they can give you a letter back.
Okay. Yeah, because how, all it is, is there's, they have one little thing, and then they do a big circle around it.
Right.
It's like winning the lottery, but not the good one.
Yeah, and if you look, almost the whole area in this area is gray, archaeologically sensitive. So I'll, so I'll read that.
But there's nothing evident. Again, you might be able to get a letter from them, being that it's, you know, there's nothing on the property, but, you know, it might not be affecting anything.
But usually, the big thing is, if you, if you let them know that it's been farmed for, historically been farmed.
For a period of time.
I mean, it's in an ag district, or parts of the property, it's next to an ag district, so.
And the front half's already been disturbed and much paved, and the back half is not going to get any buildings. So I'll, I'll look at that.
I don't, I don't think you're going to be finding any archaeological deposits of significance.
Just sacred cows. So I've heard there, yes.
Henry, in terms of the, the review for both Bob and David, have you reviewed the submission, the resubmission of the plans? And have they addressed the, any of the open concerns? And do you feel that we are close enough for a public hearing?
I think we're close enough to have a public hearing, yes.
Yes, I do. Okay.
That's, um, PEG grant money.
Hi, I'm Michelle Zerfus with Burger Engineering, with me Steve Relyea of Red Cedar. And I know you've seen the project before, so we're here for the lead agency. We'd also like, if possible, to be scheduled for a public hearing and circulation.
Okay, well, I guess we did circulate the lead agency, and it sounds like nobody has objected to it, so I mean, yes, so tonight we can declare ourselves as the lead agency for the project for the review. In terms of, I have one question for you, regarding a letter from SHPO, it was a, regarding, I guess it was in the environmental assessment form, there was a request there for the archaeological review of the property. Has that been completed at this time?
That hasn't been done yet, it's, because it's in the archaeologically sensitive area, so they'll want to, I guess, the part one, maybe a part two, but that's initially the, the archaeologist does, just does a research thing, find out if there's any historic stuff in the area, and then if they think there might be something, they go out and do some test holes. So that has not been done yet. Very unlikely that there will be anything found, given the history of the site, so we can move forward on that at the same time.
So what, what's the status of that right now? Did you have somebody look at that issue, or--
Not yet. I'm just looking at, the way the ground's been, the farmer's been using that for years, it's been turned over so many--
And that's typically, you know, if it's been farmed for a very long period of time, and you contact SHPO with that information, they'll issue a letter based on that regarding, you know, nothing of significance, so, you know, and that's pretty common with respect to, you know, things that have been used as a farm for a long period of time, because just the act of farming would basically disturb the ground and any artifacts that were there. So even, I don't know, and, you know, as you know, on the EAF mapper, God knows where the, where the site really is. So I think if you, if you reach out to SHPO, and you can, based on the fact that it was farmed, if you can give them a brief narrative of the history of the property, of what it was used for, you know, I think they can pretty much give you a, a letter saying it's, it's not of significance. I don't necessarily believe you'd have to go through a whole, you know, phase one A or anything like that. I think if you, but I think that would be the step to do with respect to that. So, you know, and almost all of the property, even the property that's being rezoned has been, has a history of being farmed. I mean, nothing, nothing strikes, I mean, it's pretty much open, I mean, for the most part, there's not really anything there.
Right.
So I think if you, if you reached out to SHPO and just had a conversation with, with respect to that, I think they can give you a letter back.
Okay, yeah, because how, all it is, is there's, they have one little thing, and then they do a big circle around it.
Right.
And that's-- It's like winning the lottery, but not the good one.
Yeah, and if you look, almost the whole area in this area is gray, archaeologically sensitive. So I--
But if there's nothing, again, you might be able to get a letter from them, being that it's, you know, there's nothing on the property, but, you know, it might not be affecting anything--
Well, usually the big, the big thing is, if you, if you let them know that it's been farmed for, historically been farmed--
For a period of time.
I mean, it's in an ag district, or parts of the property, it's next to an ag district, so.
And the front half's already been disturbed and paved, and the back half is not going to get any buildings, so I'll, I'll look at that.
I don't, I don't think you're going to be finding any archaeological deposits of significance.
Just sacred cows. So I don't hear it there, just.
All right. In terms of the, the review for both the, Bob and David, have you reviewed the submission, the resubmission of the plans? And have they addressed the, any of the open concerns, and do you feel that we are close enough to have a public hearing?
I think we're close enough to have a public hearing, yes.
Yes, I do. Okay. There's no major showstoppers that--
No.
--that create a redesign of anything?
No, no.
Okay.
Remove the fuel--
Right, away from the detention project.
Yes.
Main one.
Seven, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And I believe you are on the agenda, ready for March 18th. Is that correct, or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back, I mean--
Well, I don't think that we can, I don't, I don't think you have enough time to publish incentive notices in order to get on for the 18th meeting.
You have enough time to--
Okay.
Do we have enough?
Because it's five days or seven days?
Well, if you, if we can get you the information, and you get it to the paper by Friday morning, and publish next week, and you have to pay us this week.
I see in the letter from DEC.
Okay, so they're, they're tired of getting to get that, to write us a notice.
Well, I mean, if DEC says it's not--
At this time, it's--
Somebody from DEC--
Being they're going to be in front of us already on the 18th. I guess at this point, if everybody's in favor of getting motion to schedule a public hearing for the 18th--
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? It's a motion carries, so we will, so we will schedule them a public hearing for the 18th, with the assumption that it will be published in time--
Yes.
--before that meeting. Robert made the motion, and Rob Saget.
And you want to acknowledge for the record that you are the lead agency?
Sure. I did make, I did make statement earlier that being that we've, we haven't received any objections to us being lead agency, that, you know, at this point, I guess we're assuming that we're going to be the lead agency for the project.
Right, so, so based on, on the discussion here, I'm going to advise the town clerk that we'll put on, there's a petition for a rezon, which is just changing the designation of the properties from HD-- HD?
HD to GB.
HD to GB. So we'll schedule a hearing, a public hearing on that, probably for the 25th on the town board.
Sure.
But, you know, until such time as the negative, a negative declaration is issued, the, the town board wouldn't be in a position to act, so. But, you know, this, this board is the lead agency for seeker purposes, so once--
So we have to declare a negative declaration for--
Right.
Would you want us to start drafting that neg dec? Would you want us to start drafting that neg dec?
Are you guys going to draft a neglet declaration for that meeting? Or adjusting case?
Any reason why you can't?
That there's nothing--
But we're just waiting on--
We don't have to, we don't have to vote upon it, but we have to authorize the planner to write it--
We are waiting on the archaeological, so--
But you could still have a pair.
Yeah, that's the only open-ended issue right now.
Right.
So would it be in our, be to our advantage to prepare it now, or wait until after that has been resolved through SHPO?
Even though I brought it up, we may as well wait, I think, hold a public hearing.
It sort of skipped my mind that you-- That's what I would do.
Okay, so you're a little premature--
I've been sitting next to Jim for so long.
Does it still have a public hearing?
Yeah, I was still on a public hearing, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll hold a public hearing, that we've already voted upon. The negative declaration might have to wait until a future meeting, based upon the, the outcome of the archaeological issue.
Sure.
But at this point, we'll follow, and we'll, I guess, if there's nothing else, I guess we'll see you at the March 18th meeting.
Thank you.
And we'll see if anybody from the area comes out and has any concerns. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm on for the next thing, too, so. So I'm on for the next thing as well.
Is there--
No, the next, you're next.
The extension.
The extension on Cavalier Chapel.
Oh, you're also here for Cavalier Chapel. Okay. All right, so last item on the, on the agenda is extension for Cavalier Chapel in Hudson Valley. They're seeking a six-month extension while awaiting New York State DOT and Dutchess County Department of Health for completion of their reviews. So obviously, six months, they should, should be wrapping things up?
Well, actually, we've gotten DOT and DOH, it's, we're now waiting for the consultants because they haven't looked at the plans for a while to finish their review, and to say the plans are okay for signature.
Okay.
Because the DOT changed from permit to just the letter.
All right. But do you feel you should be able to have everything resolved within the six month, hopefully?
I'm moving to grant a six-month extension.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay. We have to go back to the beginning of the agenda. We adjourned the Xamialo-Tuot subdivision to the end of the agenda. At this point, I assume we don't have anybody here, the owner or the architect for the project hasn't come in. I guess we're still waiting, balancing information from them. I guess at this point, we need a motion to return the public hearing.
Somewhere, somewhere.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I guess at this point, also, I guess to put into the record, I guess if we don't receive anything, I guess in the future, to, to move this forward, a request to reopen the public hearing, and to petition, or to, 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 the public hearing again in the paper, it will be deemed, the application will be deemed abandoned in the future, so if anybody has any objections to that, saying there's none, I guess that's where we'll take our stand on that at this point, so. Being that we've completed our business for the evening, I guess there's one item left.
I'll make that motion?
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adjourn all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries.